Good evening, I'd like to call a Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, August the 13th, 2019, to order. It is now 6:30 PM. Ask that you please stand for the implication by Pastor John Mayer, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I beg those who really are able this time to bow their heads and lift their hearts to the Lord. Gracious and most merciful God, we gather in this time and this place to be people who seek your wisdom and all matters that come before this council. Lord God bless all of our council members and all who have gathered here that we might be people who are in a time of civility and our time to discussion, Lord God. Be with us, be in the center of this meeting, Lord God, that all will go well according to your holy will. And also we ask this night, as our first responders are out, our police, our people from our fire department, and all those who serve in emergency services, Lord God, that you might keep them safe. Keep them safe in their journeys and safely home to their families. We pray truly in your holy name. And all of God's people say amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 One nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Terrence. Span?
Here.
Minchak? Yuzlak?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Pettit?
Here.
Lamaka?
Here.
And Hardaway? Yes, here. We have six present, we have a quorum. Petitions, communications, and remonstrations. Before we get to you, Mr. Pettit, I have a letter to read. Dear Town Council President Hardaway, as you have requested, please accept my resignation from the Board of Directors of the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority. It has been my pleasure, my privilege to serve the town of Maryville. I wish you continued success in your desire to grow the hospitality industry and in the town. Sincerely, Robert Forster. Mr. Pettit?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, coaches, I'd like to invite the players to come up on the dais with you as I read this proclamation. Guys, you can get your pictures taken. You want to just come up the ramp, standing back at the council? As we all know, well documented, we're celebrating another state championship for Andrean High School. Yeah, if the parents want to take pictures once I'm done reading the proclamations, you're more than welcome. This proclamation, Town of Maryville, State of Indiana, honoring the Andrean Fighting 59er Boys Baseball Team Class III-A State Champions, whereas the Andrean Fighting 59er Boys Baseball Team is honored their school and their families by achieving the distinction of having captured the Class III-A IHSAA State Championship for the second straight year through their skill and determination. And whereas the Andrean Fighting 59er Boys Baseball Team were led by head coach Dave Pischker, assistant coaches Joe Plesek, Ryan Pischker, Sal Agüera, Mark Pischker, Joey Plesek, Matt Doolin, Jordan Smoller, and Jason Novak; and whereas the Fighting 59er Boys Baseball Team had a season record of 36 wins and one losses, 10-0 conference record that included 35 straight victories; whereas the Andrean Fighting 59ers won the Cankey Valley Sectional with victories over Hanover Central 2-0, Twin Lakes 5-2, and a comeback victory in the championship game over Cankey Valley 8-7, on Rigo Martinez clutch winning RBI in the bottom of the seventh inning; and whereas the Andrean Fighting 59ers won the Griffith Regional with victories over Griffith 11-0, and a hard-fought victory in the championship game over South Bend-St. Josephs 8-3; and whereas the Andrean Fighting 59ers won the Kokomo Semi-State with an amazing win over Yorktown 5-0 to advance to the state championship game; whereas the Andrean Fighting 59ers won the Class III-A State Championship with a come-from-behind performance in the bottom of the seventh inning on Mason Cenito's bases-loaded game-winning RBI single to right field to defeat Edgewood 2-1, and repeat as IHSAA III-A State Champions. And whereas the Town Council, the Town of Maryville, desires to recognize and honor the achievements of the Andrean 59er Boys Baseball Team with their names are as follows. And guys, I realize, give me a chance on the pronunciations. They were freshman Robbie Ballantyne, Connor Mish, Billy Jones, and Paul Alonso, sophomore Brad White, Michael Jurick, Michael Galanos, Cam Thornton, Charlie Jones, Matthew Johnson, and Justin Schausberger, juniors Sonny Ferentela, Mason Cenito, Jake Mullin, Joe Carl, and team captain Tyler Nelson; and seniors, which they've all gone away, we appreciate their efforts, seniors Ben Warren, Jose Dejoyas, Joel Holtcamp, Rigo Martinez, Matt Lolito, and team captain Michael Doolin, who was voted both Indiana Gatorade Player of the Year as well as Mr. Baseball for the State of Indiana. And I also might add, Matt Lolito left Andrean as a three-time state champion, two in baseball and one in basketball. That's quite an accomplishment. Whereas the Andrean Fighting 59ers Boys Baseball Team represented Northwest Indiana and the Town of Maryville in their quest for a state championship, be applauded for their dedication, hard work, and achievement. Now therefore, the Town of Maryville does hereby call upon all residents of the Town of Maryville to honor the outstanding accomplishments of the Andrean Boys Baseball Team and thank them for their very successful season. Hereunto, we have set our hands and caused the seal of the town to be affixed, signed by Councilman Richard Hardaway, Town Council President. Guys, outstanding job. Parents, if you guys want to come up and take pictures, you can.
Everyone smile, people are taking photos.
She needs a passcode, guys. One of the moms needs a passcode. Alright, Coach, they can stay up here because we have another proclamation that actually was Councilman Hardaway's idea, which I think is outstanding one. This proclamation, the Town of Maryville, State of Indiana, honoring Andrean Fighting 59er Boys Baseball Head Coach Dave Pischker. Whereas Dave Pischker attended Andrean High School, where he was a letterman in baseball and graduated in 1971; whereas Dave Pischker returned to his alma mater to begin coaching the Andrean 59er Baseball Team in 1980; and whereas Dave Pischker has won 27 sectional titles, 13 regional titles, and seven semi-state titles during his coaching career at Andrean; and whereas Dave Pischker has guided the Andrean Fighting 59ers to nine state championship games beginning in 2003; and whereas Dave Pischker and the Andrean Fighting 59ers have now won seven state championships since 2003; and whereas the Andrean Fighting 59ers, under the guidance of head coach Dave Pischker, have won back-to-back Class III-A State Baseball Championships in 2014 and 15, and again, most recently in 2018 and 19; and whereas on June 1st, 2019, Dave Pischker won his 1,011th high school baseball game in the state of Indiana with 11-0 victory over Griffith in the regional semifinal to become the winningest high school baseball coach in IHSAA history, surpassing his mentor, Ken Schreiber of LaPorte High School. Therefore, the Town of Maryville does now call upon all residents of the Town of Maryville to honor the outstanding accomplishments of Andrean 59er Boys Baseball Head Coach Dave Pischker and declare August 13th, 2019, Dave Pischker Day in the Town of Maryville. Hereunto, we have set our hands and caused the seal of the Town of Maryville to be affixed, Richard Hardaway, Council President. And you guys are all invited back here next July when it's three in a row.
Okay, consent agenda. Council Paper Register brought to your approval for August 13th along with approval of Town Council meeting minutes from July 23rd. Huh? Yeah, my wife, yeah. Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Lamaka, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Standing Committee Budget and Finance, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Public Works, anybody have anything? Public Works for Councilman Minchak? Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamaka?
No report tonight.
Personnel, Poly-Employed Benefits, Councilman Pettit?
No report.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak?
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamaka?
Nothing for me, but Jan?
Just a couple of things. We had a back-to-school event, it went well. We teamed up with Cardinal Cheer Squad. We had ordered some Maryville Park Department backpacks, and we had given out 100 backpacks, pencils and pens to the kids that came to the event. And I just want to let Mrs. Yuzlak know that I have had no phone calls since I've not replaced the swings at Rosenbaum. Nobody has called.
Police chief has sent out a few policemen, I believe.
Yes, and the...
They're on crew.
The light was, the street light was out there at that park. The street department got on it right away and...
Oh, good, good.
At the E&amp;L Trail, the Park Department had spent over $14,000 putting ballards to refrain from construction trucks entering the trail and dumping. Then contractors used a road from Pine Island to dump, so we put jersey blocks there. Now that we've blocked the trail, they're just dumping all of their stuff in our parking lot off of Whitcomb.
Nice.
So, just in case, if you can take a couple cruises down Whitcomb, that would help us out. We had a lot of graffiti in the town on the C&amp;O. We bought a special coating. We've painted all the graffiti off and used graffiti remover, so hopefully that will help us for a little while. Savannah Ridge equipment is already installed. However, I just got a phone call today that the porn place is five weeks behind, so I'm looking at five weeks before the porn place goes into Savannah Ridge. And the concert went well. I would again like to thank Centurio Bank for sponsoring the concert. And that was a Friday night concert. And we also held our first Gospel Fest and had six choirs attend, and it was also very successful. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
How many people attended the Friday night concert? I mean, the concert.
I had a number between 2,700 and 3,200.
Oh, definitely, it was wonderful. You did a great job.
Thank you.
And everybody I know that went to it, including myself, we appreciated the good work they put into it.
Thanks, Mar.
Sure.
There's no for me, thank you. Thank you for both days, really. You did a great job. Uh, Department of Affairs, Councilwoman Baron?
I have no report, Matt.
We have our contractor out in Liquid Estates doing several drainage improvements throughout the subdivision. Mostly retrofits, definitely needed out there. And we had a pre-con meeting with Dyer Construction this morning with regards to the Taff Street Box culvert replacement project. They're waiting for one end section to be fabricated. Once that's in, I'll issue notice of proceed and they'll begin that project. That's all I have at this point.
Elections, public relations, Councilwoman Yuzlak?
No report at this time.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit?
No report.
Utility liaison, Councilman Span?
No report.
Abandoned properties, no reports. That concludes committee reports. Uh, general orders, first reading ordinance, ordinance 19-18, and ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the various community crossing grant fund for the year 2019, not included in current budget.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron and Yuzlak, that we approve ordinance 19-18 on first reading. Any discussion? Roll call. Span?
Aye.
Yuzlak?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamaka?
Yes.
And Hardaway? Yes, motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 19-19, and ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations within both the casino fund and motor vehicle fund.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, Baron, that we approve ordinance 19-19. Any discussion? Roll call. Span?
Yes.
Yuzlak?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamaka?
Yes.
And Hardaway? Yes, motion carries 6-0. That concludes first reading ordinances. There are no second reading ordinances, resolutions. Resolution 19-31, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the Parks General Fund.
Motion? Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Lamaka, that we approve resolution 19-31. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Resolution 19-32, resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, adopting the 2019 update Lake County, Lake Count multi-hazardous mitigation plan.
No move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilwoman Lamaka, that we approve resolution 19-32. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 19-33, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the local road and street budget.
No move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve resolution 19-33. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 19-34, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the motor vehicle and motor fund budget.
No move.
Gregor.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve resolution 19-34. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Resolution 19-35, a resolution of the Park Authority of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana.
I did too.
No move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve resolution 19-35. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I think... Oh, no, we do have that, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna add 1936 to the agenda, but it's already on there.
Okay. Resolution 19-36, a resolution establishing that only Ward 7 and Ward 5 polling stations be open for the upcoming general election and all matters related thereto.
No move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, we approve resolution 19-36. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolutions. BZI action. Petitioners, Richard Scheffers, the owner is Richard Scheffers. The request is variance of use approval to allow LED Electronic Message Center, 9424 Independence Street. The zoning is C2 Commercial, case number Z27U, V6-0719. Staff report, please.
So, a correction on the address. The address is 7924 Independence Street.
79.
24 Independence Street.
Thank you.
Petitioners requesting a variance of use approval from section 21-1898 to allow a LED message center to be located at 7924 Independence Street in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner would like to erect a 8-by-10 monument sign with a 2-by-10 electronic message center. The total signage will be 80 square feet. Petitioner would like to advertise business products and services. Petitioner will promote town events when requested.
Is the petitioner here? Good evening. Anybody have any questions for the petitioner?
I do. Is this just for LED signs or is this where your business is going?
This is where my business is.
Your business is there already?
Correct.
No, I'm not worried.
Any other questions? Anybody else, anything else?
Is it in front of a home? Is that where your business is at, or is it...
That's, it's been, it's converted to an office.
Okay.
And we're actually, hopefully breaking ground next week if our permits are granted.
Okay.
An addition, warehouse addition.
Okay.
Anything else?
Kind of, I've gotten, I'll be real honest with you, we've gotten some complaints about, have you moved from one business to one area, to this area? Or we have been there?
Yeah, we used to be in a strip mall right next to where we're presently in.
Do you have a lot of junk and garbage behind your business?
Well, we did, but not from us.
Okay, so it was somebody else, wasn't you?
Yeah, it was basically with Master Q and the tobacco shop. All the cardboard boxes.
Councilman, if I may, we had an extensive discussion when they were, when this petitioner was at the recent meeting regarding dumpsters, also jet skis for sale, and all the other things. So, the petitioner has promised to make sure that his property is kept up in the best way possible and to make sure that we have water in and around the area. So, with that, the whole, any and all approvals were conditioned upon the fact that we keep that area in the pristine condition it deserves, specifically since there's residents in and around that area.
Yeah, we can't have that. I mean, I wouldn't want that in my backyard.
No, definitely not.
And I would hope that you wouldn't either.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
We need a motion.
Oh, there, yes, I do have one.
I'll make a motion.
I'm gonna second it because we really can't, Joe, if I'm not mistaken, we really can't tie the LED message sign into the condition of the property. We're just gonna have to keep an eye on it. You're gonna have to give the council your word. We talked about this, I was in the audience at the BZA that night. The two of you, they're independent, correct?
Correct, but the BZA approvals went hand-in-hand with what Councilman Baron's talking about.
Right, the developmental variance he had for the building, right.
Correct. No, the, I agree that the LED and the developmental variance are separate, but then again, it's tied into the same property. So, the town, the, your neighbors in and around that area are gonna be keeping a very close eye on you.
I would if I was living next door too.
Great.
That's why we're gonna put up the building, why we wanna put up the fence.
Good community participants and good businesses coming into Maryville, so...
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Case number Z25E6-0719, Michael Shannon, petitioner, Michael Shannon owner, requests special exception approval to allow chickens in a residential zoning district, 2545 West 65th Avenue. This zone R2 Residential Zoning District. Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section 21-10A to allow the housing of chickens at 2545 West 65th Avenue in a R2 Residential Zoning District. Petitioner is requesting special exception approval to allow 4H and housing for chickens for 4H and egg production. Section 21-10A states that accessory uses shall be compatible with the principal use and shall not include the keeping, propagation, and culture of pigeons, poetry, or livestock, whether or not for profit, except in an A1 district. Petitioner submits that chickens are defined as domestic fowl and is kept for egg or meat. Chickens are not predators and will not endanger, be a danger to the public. Chickens will not be injurious or endanger the neighborhood properties. Chickens will remain on the private property of the petitioner for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Is the petitioner here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and address, sir.
Michael Shannon, 2545 West 65th Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. Anybody have any questions?
How many chickens do you have?
I have five.
How long have you had them?
About two years, off and on.
How many complaints have you had against you?
As far as I know, just one from the neighbor next door.
How many chickens you planning on having?
Oh, more than five.
Oh, you're gonna keep it the number at five?
Yeah.
Do they make noise at 5 o'clock in the morning and wake up the neighborhood?
No, typical bird noise. Nothing extreme.
I know, I had chickens in my neighborhood and they had to go, they were making the big cockadoodle.
Yeah, see, that's a rooster, I don't have any roosters.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have roosters. Just hens.
Why do you raise the chickens?
For the eggs.
For the eggs?
Yes.
Do you eat the chickens too?
No, just the eggs. They're all, they're all still laying eggs.
Did you have anything additional to say about them? From what's in the...
The neighbor that complained about it, said, they complained that if I moved, they'd be fine with that. And I have a letter from my other neighbor, said that they're fine with the coop being moved over to their area, that they have a problem with the chickens, so...
We have an animal ordinance discussion after this meeting, so I'm going to make a motion to table this so we can discuss it till the next meeting.
I second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamaka, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we table case number Z25E6-0719. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Table. Case number Z29E7-0719, petitioners Wu and Tran, Maryville LLC, LLC 8117 Georgia Street, request special exception approval, dine-in restaurant, 8117 Georgia Street. The zoning is C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Are the petitioners here? Staff report.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval to allow a dine-in restaurant to be located at 8117 Georgia Street in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Wu and Tran, Maryville LLC, would like to open the vacant Outback Steak House with a restaurant to be known as Wu's House. Wu's House is a Japanese steakhouse and sushi bar which serves high-quality seafood, steak, and chicken. The petitioner has proposed, in addition to the building landscaping, new lighting in the parking lot and a parking lot upgrade with striping. There will be 217 seats and 132 required parking spaces. There will be 22 employees, the hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., Sunday, 11:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance and the attorney has a copy of the letter of intent for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Mr. President, I happily make a motion to approve this. I met with the couple. We went through the site plan with Sheila. This is gonna be a fantastic development, redevelopment of a vacant building over there on Georgian and 81st. So, tell them, welcome to town, and I'm excited to see them get their project started.
Will do.
Soon as we get...
Make a motion.
Soon as we get a second.
I'll second. I will happily make a second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus and Councilwoman Barron that we approve case number Z two nine E seven dash zero seven one nine. Any discussion?
As you was serving.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you.
That concludes BZA action. Any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Yes?
My name is Alan Bassam. Contacted Mr. Minchuck about a problem that we have with our property.
Could you give us your address, ma'am?
Thirty-three forty...
He's supposed to the mic, too.
Oh. Thirty-three forty West Seventy-third Place in Maryville.
Okay.
Okay? We've had a problem for several years that's gotten worse. We, we have water underneath our home. And we found that out by actually drilling in the basement in the, underneath our home is totally full of water. And we've contacted basement waterproofing, and it's, that's not something that's gonna solve the problem. We're not sure where the water is coming from. So, we'd like to ask the town if they could do anything to help us.
That gentleman right there, get with him after the meeting. Mr. Matley.
We could do a site visit. Um, it may be a private property matter, but we could point you in the right direction if it is. So, um, we'll have someone go out and take a look at it.
What would you look for?
Well, you could have, you know, a drainage tile around your perimeter and your foundation that could be plugged up.
This is my husband doing...
It's not the drainage tile. It's, uh, we actually had to add additional sump pump because of the water, the hole under of the house is constant water. My sump pump bolts them go off like every eight to ten minutes. Um, the drain tiles are fine. The water is coming through into the sump pit, constant flow. Clear water, groundwater. We've had the, uh, turned off the B box. So, there's, it's not water coming into the house. It's coming from underground.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can look at the groundwater too, but...
Yeah, we really need help. Because we don't know what to do.
It wasn't there until construction in the neighborhood and like the retention pond. And we have the lake from the runoff from the cemetery across the street.
The park over there?
Okay.
You know where that is?
Get with Matt after the meeting.
Yeah, let me get your phone number and information.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Announcements. Environmental Resource Committee meeting on August fifteenth at two PM. Employee Appreciation Day, August eighteenth at Deep River. Budget Finance Committee meeting, August twentieth at five PM. Plan Commission meeting, August twentieth, six-thirty PM. Abandoned Black Properties meeting, August twenty-second at two-thirty. Next Town Council meeting, August twenty-seventh at six-thirty. Also, we will be welcoming the kids back to school tomorrow morning at seven fifteen at MIS. One more bit of business.
Go to the end.
We're done.
Who's second?